Ms. Anderson, would you like to report out?
Yes, staff has been given direction.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will conclude the closed session and begin the open session. That sounds so funny to do that, but let's go with the roll call, please.
Well, Mayor, we only have one noticed agenda today.
Okay.
So we can head right into our hearing, our notice 6:00 P. M. Hearing.
Okay, thanks. Super. So I have something to read first, and I will do so. This is on item number two. The appeal hearing to uphold or overturn the tax collector determination dated April 8th, 2025, enforcing assessed transient occupancy taxes and penalties from audit findings June 30th, 2020, March 31st, 2023 against Cameron Lerner, business owner of Casa Ojai Inn managed by B N W Inns LLC. So here's what I will read. The council now turns to item number two, which is the hearing requested by appellate Cam Lerner as the owner of Casa Ojai Inn. At issue is an assessment of unpaid transient occupancy taxes and related penalties against the inn based on an audit covering the period from June 2020 through March 2023. Mr. Lerner appealed this assessment to the assistant city manager who ruled against him, and so Mr. Lerner has appealed to the assistant city manager's decision as tax collector to the council under Ojai Municipal Code Section 8-1.429. The city's attorney's office is here to advise the council on the procedures for this hearing. So the council has contracted with Oliveris Madruga, sorry if I'm saying that wrong, law organization as a third party to argue on behalf of the city's tax official. Mr. Lerner is welcome to argue on his own behalf or through an attorney of his choice. The purpose of this hearing is to allow each side to present evidence and argument regarding the taxes and penalties at issue. The formal rules of evidence do not apply. So for example, the council will not require testimonial evidence to be provided under oath. If either side objects to evidence presented by the other, you may note it for the record during your allotted time. But the council will not rule on any evidentiary objection, and we direct you not to interrupt each other's presentations to make such objections. Each side will also be limited. Because the city has the burden to show the assessment of taxes and penalties against the inn is valid, it will go first and it will have 30 minutes to present its primary case. Mr. Lerner will have 30 minutes to present his case, followed by the city again with 10 minutes for any rebuttal argument it wishes to make. Each side may make closing arguments. The council's job is to impartially consider each side's evidence and argument, and then decide whether the taxes and penalties at issue should be assessed against the inn. We may have questions for you, but if we, sorry, but if so, we will ask them after your presentation, and your time to answer will not be counted against you. The evidence the council will consider includes any briefing and other materials the party submitted ahead of tonight, along with any additional testimonial and written evidence submitted this evening. If you submit additional written evidence this evening, please label it with a designation that follows the last exhibit you presented to the assistant city manager. So for example, if the last document you submitted at the previous hearing was Exhibit F in quotes, the first document you submitted this evening will be Exhibit G in quotes. Once the hearing concludes, the council will take the matter under submission and issue a written decision. That decision will be the city's final and conclusive decision in the matter, which means that if Mr. Lerner wants to appeal it, he must appeal to the Ventura County Superior Court. However, Mr. Lerner, if the council's decision goes against you and you choose to appeal it, please note that the law requires you to pay any taxes and penalties that the council orders you to pay before you file that appeal. This is what lawyers call the pay first, litigate later rule, and it does not prevent you from asking the court to order a refund. But again, that is only relevant if the council's decision goes against you. So with that, before council invites the city to make its presentation, we will take any public comments.
Mayor, I've received no public comments in house, but we should, we do have a few attendees on Zoom. So Zoom attendees, I am now allowing public comment on items two and three.
Well, we're starting, that was two that I just read, so I'll have something else on three.
Thank you for clarifying, Mayor. On item two only right now. We still have no raised hands, but thank you for the time, Mayor.
Okay.
And we can move on.
All right. So now it suggests that I would go to the city's main argument, but any questions from our council first?
I think it'd probably be a good idea to explain the relationship of our tax authority. Just for whoever's listening.
And just for clarification, council member, are you speaking of the city's ability to collect a tax?
No, no, I mean the organization, the firm that is doing work on the city's behalf to determine what is taxable.
Councilmember, that's my mic, sorry, I've not been on this side, so I'm Councilwoman for Whitman, our relationship is it's a consultant that the city hires, and they are skilled in knowing our tax code and the parameters under which we operate, and they operate for many cities throughout the state of California. And is there anything else that you asked there that I did not answer?
Their, their operation is to assess these types of tax matters where there is, you know, there's a question about what's collectible or not.
If I could jump in, I think what might be a good thing to speak to is there's an audit process and a determination each year as to randomly as to which institutions are audited and then findings are presented. Did you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, and was going to say that, so they have a process by which they, it's in our municipal code as to what the tax, the hotel operator is required to provide, and they audit in accordance with what our municipal code states is taxable. So they're auditing under the parameters of our municipal code. They will select the information, the operator provides that information, they review it, and then tally what has been held as non-taxable, or what has not, what tax has not been collected, if any.
I have a general question, and this will be from Ms. Anderson or whoever is appropriate to answer. So we received many documents in the last 24 hours from Mr. Lerner, and so it's not something that we could reasonably digest, especially ones that we received today. So I'm asking for some clarification or direction. Since we do not have the reasonable time to review these documents, also, so I can't make a judgment as to their relevance to this case. So I guess the question is, is proceeding fine or is waiting more appropriate? What, I'm asking for a little guidance here.
It would be within your discretion. If you don't feel comfortable because you haven't had the time to review the documents, you can definitely review, or I'm sorry, you can continue the hearing to a later date to allow yourself time to do so. Since Mr. Lerner presented the material so close to the hearing, he can, you can also ask him to explain what the documents are, and hopefully he brought copies of them to make available to you. I'm not quite sure if he did that. If he did, you could consider the documents as they are handed to you. That was generally how the last hearing went, where the exhibits were provided as the hearing was ongoing. So it would be within council's discretion of what you feel comfortable considering as you move forward.
So following up on, on that, my understanding from what the mayor read would be that when all sides have presented their cases, we're still going to issue something in writing, right?
So what we'll do is council will deliberate after both sides have rested, and then whatever opinion that you come to, my office will assist with formalizing that in writing and sending it to Mr. Lerner with the procedures of appeal and what's necessary to do that.
So we are voting tonight unless we move to continue it.
Correct.
Ms. Bang, did you have a question?
Well, I was just curious, so all of the information that we've received.
I don't think your mic's on.
All of the information that we've received up to today, would that be sufficient to just go on that? Would there be any stipulations or rules if we went on what we've had to study over the weekend without the additional information? Would it change anything from our perspective if we just use what we have instead of including the additional?
Let me, let me offer a thought, a concern or a question, which is, I, I can't judge whether or not this is highly relevant to the case because I haven't had a chance to read it all, especially from today. So then the question would be something like, for at least for me, if this is important to the case, is it worth postponing so that we can read it? However, I would request and, and almost insist to say we have a deadline of some reasonable amount of time, like 10 days prior to whenever that moves forward, and that nothing is submitted after that 10 days. Something like that, that's a proposal, but that, I was, I have the same concern that if there's something important, I, I might offer one slight other modification, which is, I need this to be more succinct, or I would highly deeply request it. So to receive dozens and dozens of documents that overlap in content, I need some summary work here from Mr. Lerner or somebody to say, here's a package that we can make some reasonable sense out of. Did you have something that you wanted to add?
No, I'm, I'm aligning with you on a lot of these different points. I mean, I, I was able to look at all of the information that came in last, that came in yesterday, but today the, the ones that, that came in at 4:30, for example, just haven't had time to look at. But if, but it, if, I, I think that's the question I have too. If this is going to really change the, the picture for, for the narrative, then I would, I would want time for that.
So a question on, on point is, in the event there was an appeal, would the court be considering the documents that come in at 4:30?
No, and we tried to set parameters for Mr. Lerner to submit documents to you in advance to be shared not only with the city's council, but with you when the agenda went out and he protested. So we allowed him to submit the documents. We assumed what would be at the hearing, not in the fashion that it was presented today. In the request for, in the notice for the hearing, we did ask for one brief for your benefit to synthesize what his arguments were. In your discretion, as the council, you know, over this hearing, you can choose not to consider that evidence because it came in late. That's another option too. He does have the ability to provide the information to you if he has copies today and explain what the value is. So it's, it's not unreasonable to put the limitation that the document set sent an hour and a half before the hearing for your consideration. Doesn't allow you ample time to review them.
Of course.
And that leaves us the option of either considering them, or we also have the discretion not to consider those words.
Correct.
Or, or the option of postponing this hearing so that we can consider it with the stipulations I would suggest that were offered here.
And I would say that if you're going to allow the hearing to be continued, that the city should be able to submit new briefs. Just because I, the information in the documents that were provided today may be different and appear to be some new arguments that Mr. Lerner is stating in his appeal. So allowing the city the same right to respond that Mr. Lerner is being afforded if you're, if you're going to continue the hearing. So everybody should be allowed to resubmit.
And is, is, is 10 days prior to our hearing a reasonable timeframe?
I would say so. That would give us plenty of time to, to notice the meeting and post the agenda well in advance of the meeting as council has requested and allow you more time to review, and Weston and I can commit to getting the agenda out as quickly as possible once we receive everything.
Is it appropriate to ask our consultant about this issue, about either moving forward or any of the other options that we have tonight? Or is that just our decision to make without their?
I would say it's your decision to make without their input because they are a party in this hearing.
Okay.
The other piece of this is that council member Rule reached out to, to us to say that if, that if there was a tied vote, that she would want us to continue the hearing and not to move forward with it. And so that's another consideration that I just wanted to toss into the mix while we're talking about that is, is that, you know, that's a potential outcome.
Sure. I, I want to ask Mr. Lerner to come to the podium, please, and I want to ask you if in good faith you would be willing to meet those criteria. In other words, I'll say more explicitly, 10 days before the hearing, everything is here? Nothing after 10 days before the hearing?
I would.
And that it could be more succinct?
I would.
An explanation of the documents you're providing.
I understand. This isn't my normal business role, so I'm new to this, and although I had requested guidelines for, for the initial hearing, the tax collector hearing, and now I've been provided very little. And then when I was provided guidelines, there wasn't much time to respond to the guidelines. And if I may ask a question, as I'm largely operating based on what the Ojai Municipal Code says, and I'm looking at the code for the, in the appeal section, I think it's chapter one, section eight, or article eight, and what's in the tot article itself does not inform the constituent or me that there is any form of additional parties to this hearing, that it's the council and the tax, I mean, and the operator. So I don't understand why this, in this hearing and in the prior hearing, I'm having to take an adversarial stance against the city.
I understand. You, you posted something to that effect. And so that's something that I think we could hear when we come back, or, so that's something that we will consider when we do postpone this hearing, which is, sounds like we may do. What do you think?
It sounds like both of you would lean towards continuing the hearing.
Postponing it to another time?
And, and I'm, and I'm, I'm fine with that. I guess the one thing that, you know, we may want to look at, and I know we can't do future agenda items from, you know, from this format of a meeting, but I think this is, you know, related to what we're doing here today. We should probably take a look at our procedures and, given what's happened, and have some definite guidelines, you know, spelling out the rules that you need to comply with in order to present your, well, I guess we're presenting the case, but whatever. There should be.
Well, your honor, in this, in this situation, the city staff is presenting the case with their legal counsel, and you are acting as judge here.
Right.
Right? And then Mr. Lerner is the appellate. So this is a, a bit of a different situation from what we normally see, and we don't, we don't have a lot of hearings that come before council. But your feedback has been heard, and it's something that we can work on before noticing the next hearing.
Yeah, so I'm not saying that our procedures are inadequate. I'm just saying we should look at them. We should look at them and make sure that anybody who gets involved in this is.
Sure.
That's a good caveat.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
I will add that my hesitation in, in continuing this hearing and bringing it back at another time, my hesitation would be just that, you know, the mental exhaustion of having this hang over your head and, and also just having this lingering issue going on and on. And so that would be just one, one, I mean, I feel like I have a good base background just looking at what we looked at this weekend. The only thing I haven't been able to review was, was what came in today. So, yeah, so I, I just wanted to.
No, we could, we could leave it. You know, we could leave it to the, I don't think applicant's the right name, but it can be the appellate. It could be his decision as to whether we proceed tonight, or whether he wants to give us a further explanation of the documents and have a clear record of everything that we received and considered.
And an invitation to speak?
Yes, please go.
So I wasn't expecting this. I haven't given it a lot of thought, but certainly I did feel a lot of pressure from the time that I received notice of the hearing to compile everything. This controversy has been going on for over a year and a half, and as a consequence, there are a lot of moving parts, and it's not just one thing as you're kind of probably came to understand. And so I got, I needed to evaluate everything, and I did my best to do that, but I wasn't able to sort through it and prioritize. I tried to prioritize in my first email, and to a large extent, that does stand well on itself. Subsequent emails with additional content are largely exhibits that provide more detail or background or evidence to support my assertions, including basically an ad hoc kind of summary, which I labeled as the simple facts, which I just sent, and then I saw a mistake, so I revised it to simple facts version two. But I am happy to take a step back and, you know, be able to have a little more time, although at the same time, to councilman, council member Lang's point, I've, it's been very stressful for me to put this together, and so part of me says it would be nice to relieve that stress and, and get it over. I'm happy to, I did happen to print out the submissions that I sent this afternoon. Unfortunately, when I arrived at the printer, having given them directions, they only printed out one set. So I have that set, but I can share that set. And I don't necessarily, it's up to you really. I wasn't expecting to call every exhibit. It's more of, if you had questions, then I would say, oh, well, maybe we can examine these exhibits. It might help you understand. My role for tonight, my anticipation for tonight was largely to tell my story. Because I know from past experience with my tax collector meeting that trying to wade through detailed legal analysis and all that stuff doesn't work in that type of environment, unless maybe you're a lawyer and I'm not. So.
We could also offer to take a brief recess and photocopy the documents that Mr. Lerner has provided if you would like to continue today.
And I would just say for myself, I do have them electronically, and secondly, I can't read them, so in a way, it's not that useful for me to have it, the photocopy here and not having read them, but that's for me personally. But I'm happy, I'm, I want to hear from my colleagues. I'm happy to proceed or postpone. Either way is fine with me. I'm hearing good arguments either way. And I'm hearing from you some ambivalence. Either way is fine with you.
It's a, if I may sort of address freely, I feel that.
Try not to make the presentation for your case if you can, but.
No, no, it's more administrative, right? So the idea is that, you know, one, I feel that I was arbitrarily constrained in terms of when I needed to submit documents.
Okay.
Like I got an email that said submit them by this time. I said, where is that written procedurally or otherwise? I mean, technically, I don't, I only have five days according to the code upon servicing of the hearing or notice of the hearing to, to present a case, which in and of itself is documented, but not a whole lot of time. But then on top of that, to suggest that from the moment that I received this email that provided some procedural guidelines, it, it offered me, I think it was 10 minutes to speak when I've got a year and a half worth of analysis and experience to share, which, you know, is hard to condense. And two days to prepare everything to submit it, you know, electronically. It just seemed wholly unreasonable, and I.
Well, if I might offer, then that seems like an argument to say there's a date that will be known well in advance, and you will know that 10 days before that is when things are in. And I would suggest, I hear you saying you have a year and a half of, of, of a case to make, but with more thought, 40, you know, 30 minutes or maybe with a slight extension, could, it could do it.
Oh, no, I, I totally agree. It's, it's, I'm, you know, exaggerating. Well, I'm not exaggerating anything, but I, I didn't think 10 minutes was adequate, right? Especially given the time that it took during the tax collector hearing and knowing that the way I'm going to present is going to be different. But that said, my goal is, my, my approach to this is to provide you with everything I can provide that will give you the best opportunity to make the right choice, right? And I've got a lot, you know, what I mean to say, I've got a, a year and a half of experience really digging into tot. I don't know anybody else that probably hasn't spent this much time. I mean, I know when I talk to my fellow operators, they're like, we don't know. We're not sure. But obviously, it was important to me, and I, I invested heavily in it. So that said, I do have a story to tell. I was prepared to tell that story for, you know, 30 minutes. I, because I knew of the format, I was prepared to address the plaintiff, although I protest at that part of the format. And I would be, it would be nice to be, you know, to call it finished tonight because it's been stressful and it's taken a lot of work for me. So I don't know to the extent to which extra time is really going to, I've presented my case.
Okay.
Right?
Then I'm hearing you say, let's proceed.
As long as you're open, I mean, I know you're not going to make a decision tonight, as long as you're, you, I feel.
We are making decisions tonight.
Oh, so then if you haven't had a chance, I'm not saying that my story is going to be able to prevent you all the, all the evidence and the data. It won't. I'm expecting that you all have reviewed it all.
And that's why I'm asking for clarity.
Yeah.
We are going to make it, if we proceed tonight, we will make a decision tonight.
Then I would object.
Okay.
Because then I know you haven't had a chance to read through it all.
Okay.
And you'd be, you'd be taking my story, which may or may not satisfy, some people might be satisfied by a story, other people.
Just for clarification, so we wouldn't have a part one and a part two later where we want to go for it or postpone? Do you understand? In other words, we, I'm hearing you say more time would help you make your clearer case so that we have a chance to read everything that you feel is important.
I think a part one and a part two, I would agree with that.
That's not what we're saying.
Okay.
Okay.
So if I was, if we were to proceed tonight and I was to tell my story, and you were to make a decision after that story, after everybody, then I would say that you haven't thoroughly had a chance to review everything, and thus your decision might not be informed.
Understood.
So with all that being said, and I am an attorney, I, I think the idea that you have the opportunity not only to make sure that we read the documents, but that you explain why we're reading the documents, and you'll have a chance to give us a brief 10 days ahead of the hearing.
Yes.
And then we'll have the ability to focus in on the things that you're telling us to focus in on.
I, I would move that way.
I would, I would suggest that that's the way we need to.
I, I would agree with that.
And it will be less stressful because you've created a packet that we've read, and then if you can take what came in today that we weren't allowed, or, you know, didn't have the time to read, to make one package that just says it all, and we're good to go.
And I, I would ask you to do one other thing if you're willing, which is, give us something that you say, this is really, really important, but it can't be 300 pages. And then you give us something else, say, and if you want more, it's here.
Right.
So that's the kind of information.
I did try to do that, but I'm not, you know, well versed in these types of.
So now you have more time to get versed.
And I appreciate that.
Okay.
I mean.
Thank you.
And can I also make a request to staff that we don't need to print off, that if, that, like, anything new coming in, we would print off, but we, that if in the next packet, there's a lot of paper, a lot of trees.
If it, if it's possible to do that, and if the city doesn't change and resubmit its arguments.
Right, there may be changes here.
I think it will be difficult to do that.
Never mind, okay.
Yeah, but to the extent it's possible, we will definitely try. Thank you.
I'm fine with only receiving exhibits. Exhibits in electronic form.
Okay.
I'd like to see, you know, whatever briefs or reports in written form.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clerk, so what we'll do, Mr. Clerk, is provide the exhibits electronically to the council, and in their agenda packet, we'll only print the the brief slash staff report.
The single document is very nice too, by the way. The single document.
In one document with exhibits labeled.
So will he be able to add more documents, or will take what we have in today's agenda and the stuff that was emailed today, and he'll just tidy it up?
I'm suggesting that he go back and look at his information again and figure out a way to make it more clear and succinct, and then put it into more categories of, you know, must read and then auxiliary, something like that, so that we're clear.
If, what I hear from you, Mayor, is that you're asking for context in a brief of what each of the documents mean. So like, here is the audit in question attached as Exhibit A.
That would be very useful.
And here, here is my analysis on, you know,
That would be wonderful.
X, Y, Z attached as exhibit B.
Yes, sir.
Well, to respond to that, I did attempt to do that to some extent. So I believe that you'll find that that is generally, especially if you read through my, the first email I sent, which contained an overview document.
I saw that.
And that overview document is very much ordered and sequenced.
That was useful.
And so that sort of aligns with what you're, you're looking for. But if you haven't had a chance to read it.
No, I did read that. I just had a hard time reading the other 18 documents that were also attached to that email.
Well, those are the supporting.
I understand.
They should be labeled
Yeah, yeah.
For everybody's benefit, so that when you are, when you present your case, you can say, I'm referencing exhibit A, and then everybody knows what you're talking about.
Right. Oh, I see. Rep, rep, I mean, they're labeled, but you're saying in terms of like a.
Yeah, but not by title.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I get you.
I, but I understand, I saw the document you're talking about. That's exactly what I'm hoping for. Thank you.
Um, my hesitation, a little hesitation in the city attorney's comment regarding reexamining their case based on my, my submissions. This is where I might find procedural objections again, because there's no procedure that says I have to provide my whole case so that they can evaluate it and make a case against me. As it stands, they've done what they thought was right, right? Long ago, they, they did an assessment. They sent me an, an audit letter. I, you know, argued or I, I didn't believe that they were, I had done it correctly, so I disputed it. There was conversation back and forth. I mean, I, but anyway, the idea is that according to the article of transient occupancy tax, there is nothing in the hearing release section that indicates that it's anybody else besides the tax, I mean, the operator and the hearing.
I'm hearing you. It's, that is part of your case, I believe, and that's a difference in the reading of that ordinance. So that's part of what we, you, I'm sure you will present.
Well, there's an irony there, right?
There is an irony there.
Yeah.
But, but it seems to me that's part of your case of which we will hear two sides of it.
Okay.
Okay. So I heard us say that we have agreed to postpone?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. All right. So I hope that we can get that listed as soon as possible. So we know when that 10 days is. Okay.
We will work to.
I mean, that we know of the date as soon as we can, not that the date has to be as soon as we need.
On the council's availability when there is time.
Thanks.
Um, considering there are two hearings and you only opened the hearing for one, I think we would just need confirmation from you that you're providing the same direction for the second hearing.
Does anybody not feel that way? I'm presuming we mean for both.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to be clear.
No, no, thank you. Clarity is wonderful.
For, for both matters, we are going to continue
Yes.
The hearing to a later date and we will renotice it with the terms that the council has provided and provide clear direction in what the hearing procedures are.
Thank you.
For this applicant, for appellate and appellants moving forward.
And then I think we also probably need to set it for a special night because we're looking at two potentially hour plus hearings.
It's unlikely this will be at a regular council meeting. We'll likely have to schedule a special meeting as we did today.
Okay, that's what I'm suggesting.
I think that's correct. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Oh, yes.
I, I have a question. So, um, let's see, I just wrote it down here. Will my submission directly to the council be available to the city? And why?
Yes. They're a party to this hearing and they have an opportunity to respond. This is not a one-way communication. The city, the city's obligation is to prove that the tax levied against you is appropriate penalties and interest. They have a right to respond to the documents that you're presenting.
I understand that, but that doesn't, that's not what I said. I said, do you have a right to review the documents I pre-sent to the council?
They've already received copies of them. The fact that you didn't submit the documents to the clerk as we requested so that the city could have access to it was quite unfair. But so, yeah, they've been provided all of the documents.
Also, one thing I'll add is that anything that comes to us is public.
Yes.
So actually, if the newspaper wanted to, to do a public records request, she could see, see anything that you sent us.
Actually, this is, I will, this is a great point. I mean, I didn't mean to cut you off. Thank you, because that satisfies my concern and you're right, so it's public. So that's perfectly fine. It also hopefully allows for the requests of information that I submitted that have yet to be delivered to me be delivered because they should be delivered within 10 days of the request by law. And that will be very shortly.
The Public Records Act requires that the city respond that it has available records within 10 days. It legally requires that we provide records to you promptly. Staff is working on those requests and will get them to you promptly. And I believe a response should be going out to you this week whether records exist. They're working on searching to ensure that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks for being here.
All right.
And for.
Thank you.
The next step.
All right.
And thank you for being here. I appreciate it. All right, we have one more item. Which is, actually, we have two more items.
Correct.
We are on discussion of number four, the extension of the three-month pilot program with Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce and establishment of the two and two committee. Mr. Harvey, please.
Uh, yes, Mayor, and I would like to note that our chamber executive director is also here in the audience. Uh, but basically this is as promised to you three months ago, we embarked upon a pilot under a scope of services provided by the chamber. We have successfully reached the end of that term. We received detailed invoices from the chamber explaining the work that was done for each month during that three-month period. And here we are now, as we talked about at that meeting, recommending that you continue the agreement for the duration of this fiscal year, so that's until June, at the same rate of pay that you were extending to the chamber under the pilot program. And with the addition of establishing, as is mentioned in the scope of services, a two-by-two committee comprised of two, excuse me, council members and two chamber board members with your determination as to whether you wish to, wish to make this an ad hoc or a brown act committee. Um, as I indicated, the executive director is here with us in case you'd like to talk anymore. But that is the extent of my brief staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, so there's two items. One would be extending the contract as I'm seeing it, and the second would be the two and two committee. So maybe we can take those two separately, just for expediency. I've been very pleased with what I've been seeing so far, but I would love to hear from my colleagues from the chamber, please.
Do we have any public comments?
Oh, do we have any public comments on this item? Thank you. Thanks.
Still no public comments received. It looks like.
Please come up. We do want to hear from you.
And no raised hands on Zoom from our Zoom participants.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carla Ferrante DeRifano, CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for allowing me time to address you all. Um, we do have before us the two-by-two committee that we'd like to establish. Um, the spirit of the contract into which we entered back in July 8th year vote was a three-month professional services agreement for the time period from July 1st forward through the end of September. And I considered it a foundational professional services agreement. There had been some time in which the chamber was not perhaps working in tandem in a formal capacity with the city. So these past three months have been dedicated to rebuilding the foundation of those services, not just for the local businesses, but also for the adjacent residential lifestyle and life enrichment opportunities. So we are well underway. We have just two more weeks left on the contract. But we're looking forward very eagerly to a, let's say, continuation of the professional service agreement. Either as it stands with the spirit that the two-by-two committee was always intended to be working in tandem with the city on refining the contract, refining deliverables, extending the services of the chamber underneath that contract. So in any regard that I can answer questions as to what we have been doing, some opportunities we see in front of us on behalf of the synergy with the city, I'm more than happy to address anything. Thank you for your time.
And you've listed in your document what is in progress, what is coming. So that was very useful. Thank you for that. That's in exhibit A, page 278 of the packet. That's where it begins. Yes.
So I'm, I'm gonna, I have a couple of questions, but I want to start by just saying that you have really exceeded my own expectations for when, when we first entered into this contract. You've gone above and beyond and really helped so many of our small businesses. I've been hearing about it from people in the community. And, uh, and I love the new life that's, that's, that's emerging in, in our, in our business community. So I, I'm wondering from your perspective, if you could just say for, for the public record, what are some of the top successes that you've seen and what are some of the top goals that you have?
Thank you. And also thank you for the kind words in regards to the chamber's efforts. We really appreciate all the support and service we've had from city staff and also our elected officials. So we appreciate reciprocally back to yourselves. That success is driven by that partnership. So we appreciate your kind words. In regards to some of the more sizable successes we've had to date, and all of them are on a continuum because most of the programs that we have established are just continuing, again, rebuilding foundation and continuing to deepen the, the benefit to the businesses and the residents. So one of them first off is providing consulting services as business development consultants to the businesses that we already have in place. Without getting too specific, you know, there's some businesses that are facing financial challenges, either their profitability format that they had in years past no longer applies because of competition from Amazon drop shipping and things of that nature. So meeting with them, understanding what their receivables look like, even going to the extent where we give them letters that they can use to collect those receivables on a higher level of success rate, helping them establish online credit card payments for their business customers. So it can be nuts and bolts all the way through strategic. For example, on the strategic side of things, one of the local restaurants that is a newer restaurant to town, they applied for a CUP entertainment permit. So while that process always goes very smoothly through the city staff, we wanted to help them accelerate their consideration, how they prepare for their application. We helped them identify possible issues with the application. Those issues didn't exist, but we like to foresee anything that we can kind of address, detail for the city, kind of to accelerate the permit process, um, application. We broaden that conversation with that restaurant beyond just their CUP permit application. We talk about how is the launch to their business going? Where are strategies where they could expand? We talk about enriching the menu options. We talk about different opportunities to relaunch their entertainment venue once they have the permit from the city. So we're giving them more publicity even beyond the area of Ojai. So, you know, what we're trying to do is for every business we have there is make ourselves accessible to help them take a different look at their business. You know, some of our businesses are family, family established, second generation. Some of them might be related to construction, thinking of one that has leasing finance burden that is very substantial on a month-to-the-month basis. How can they go and how can they handle that financial burden offset with increased sales? It's very challenging out there. So we're just addressing a variety of different businesses and the consulting that they need. Some of them implement what we recommend. Some of them ask the chamber to help them implement it. We are available to them on a time basis. Uh, not for any charge. We're just helping them, right? Um, but we have to prioritize very carefully how we're spending the time. So I would say first and foremost, what I find most rewarding and hopefully the businesses do, is those with whom we've spent time consulting on where they can improve. A second example we have is continuity of the events in Libby Park at the Plaza Foundation, sorry, Fountain Plaza. So we've been implementing the ones that were identified by my predecessor, Jamie Fleming. But we've actually expanded it a little bit more in the regards that we open up to local artists. And some of the performers might be younger artists that haven't had an opportunity to really get that in-public opportunity. So it's enriching their lives at the same time that we're helping our vendors that may be home businesses or just not brick and mortar businesses have an opportunity to sell their wares in Libby Fountain. So we've had a lot of different successes with that, even despite, you know, maybe competing protests along Ojai Avenue. We still had a successful event. Our autumn festival is coming up this Saturday, the 20th of September. We are working on new events for Ojai that we think can be above and beyond just the smaller size venue of Libby Park Fountain Plaza with the vendors. Uh, one thing we are trying to do is organize a vintage RV trailer and car show event. And we're, our idea is to sprinkle ahead of time RVs in different areas of the city. One, one vision that the chamber has in reflection with some of our friends of the chamber is how to spread more foot traffic beyond the two-block radius that typically is from nor, uh, from single signal intersection forward to Montgomery. And so these vintage RVs, uh, we added them into a balloon festival I had done previously. They come in clubs. They like to stay. We can have them, you know, come on a Thursday night. So some of our hotels can have pocket events specifically with the RVs. And then it just lends itself to vendors that are all dedicated to vintage. So vintage Ojai is kind of a nice feel to it for a like substantial landmark event. So that's under development right now. We have a draft logo if anyone wants to see it. So these are the types of events. So I've mentioned consulting to businesses on a strategic level. We've mentioned now the events in Libby Park meant to both enrich the local life and add business opportunities to our vendors that don't have brick and mortar establishments. And then we've also moved forward with our business sector seminars. We've conducted the social media optimization seminar for business owners that are reliant on continuing visibility and deepening relationships with the people that follow them on social media. We just recently, today, did the seminar for Medicare and Social Security to help local residents, not necessarily the businesses, but again, the residents, understand the upcoming changes. What that does is it marries a partnership between the resources we have with our local businesses. It was Lyndon Thomas Insurance and Sage Point Wealth Management. We marry their expertise with the residents' interest in those areas because it's very important and critical, the changes that they're going to be facing, make sure they have it and information available. So those are two examples on the business sector seminars that we put in place.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Yeah. So what I'm really eager also to see is I saw your, the prototype of the welcome basket, for example. And so that would be basically what somebody who moves to Ojai would receive. So in addition to, let's say, Ojai products or whatever, I hear us, we're, we're having some early conversations about what could be in there to support Ojai's nonprofits and all those kinds of things. So it's really interesting. So I'm interested in the chamber becoming, in a sense, a partner with the city in, in ways where you are helping us understand the business climate that's here, what businesses need, but also how we keep this balance between the residents' quality of life and the tourism that we all feel the pressure about so that we, and I'm hearing, I see there's a whole section about managing tourism. So as we survey and we're trying to become more interested in, in understanding how, what the state of our economy is on the city side, I, we, my interest is, is looking to the chamber and other organizations to say, help us understand this in the best possible way, including our creative community that we hear from the Arts Commission and so on. So I'm hoping that you will also be a strategic partner in every sense of the word.
We do look forward to it.
Yeah.
Um, as you mentioned arts, one thing we'd like to do is extend an invitation to those artists that would like to apply for grants that were made possible with allocation of the city budgeting. Uh, we can help them do the grants. You know, sometimes artists might feel a little hesitation. Maybe they haven't applied for a grant before. They're unfamiliar with how to get through the application. Our services are available to them as well because the more that we can kind of support and, and help develop the art in the community, it all lends itself. You know, we talked earlier, I think it was Councilmember Lang presented to the chamber board, you know, the evidence and statistics we've seen were development of art and creativity component of an economy lends itself to development with housing lends itself to, you know, having those middle-income families with children continue to be a vibrant part of the community. It's all interlinked. So we see our role, you know, commensurate with the same vision of the city in that regard.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, um, so I, I think I want to start with a question I asked the city manager earlier today. But, you know, just to have him share what he shared with me, which is from your involvement with the, um, with Ms. Ferrante, actually, are you seeing that their services have a significant reduction in the amount of staff time we're having to devote towards these same issues?
Yes, if I could through the mayor. Um, what I'm seeing now is that we actually have a resource that we can use. We often interact with businesses that are trying. We often interact with businesses that are trying to navigate a process or need some extra, you know, handholding, if you will, or care and feeding. It's often difficult for us because we're a regulatory body on top of a body that tries to be helpful. But sometimes it's better to be able to offload something to a third party to be able to assist with the process. And so that's, you know, one of many ways I've seen a benefit from having this type of arrangement with the chamber.
So I'm, I'm, you know, probably somebody historically who has not been enthusiastic about spending money on the chamber. But, you know, my attitude's changing. I was really gratified to hear you give your one-minute introduction and you included, you know, my big issue. I'm happy to have the, you know, support the chamber as long as we're always looking at supporting the residents in addition to the businesses. And you've put that at the forefront. The mayor mentioned the same concept. So I would, I would also say that you shirked off a personal compliment by Councilmember Lang, who was actually not trying to compliment the chamber as much as compliment you.
Agreed.
I would say that you and I have had three lengthy conversations, and I would say that they are the best conversations that I've had
Good to hear.
related to commerce and related to Ojai. Because your interests and your instincts, you know, definitely go towards what's good for the community as part of what's good for the Chamber of Commerce. So I am, if you'd asked me this, you know, a year or so ago, if I'd be supporting this, I would have said no. But I'm pretty enthusiastic and optimistic about supporting the proposal.
Thank you.
I've also said that, talked to the city manager about the idea that we might want to look at the possibility of creating a staff position that basically does what Ms. Ferrante, sorry, I'm not getting your full name. But what Carla is doing for us as a staff-paid position, it might be very much similar to what she's doing now, but it would be, you know, at the lead and direction of city staff.
An economic development coordinator or something along those lines.
Yeah, and I'm just, and actually, I think Carla is very talented. And I appreciate the chance to work with you.
Thank you.
Anything, Ms. Meng?
No, I'm good. You guys said it. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
So then, I guess, then I'd like to propose that we extend the contract through our fiscal year. Oh, here, we checked that first. Yes, no, not at all. So I motioned that, I moved that we extend the contract to the end of our fiscal year.
I second it.
Okay. Okay. Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Yep.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule absent.
Thank you. So if you don't mind, so on the second part, the two-in-two, I will just throw out an option. And the only reason I throw this out is because I'm actively working with the chamber and attend their meeting when they ask me to, but also the BRG, I speak there regularly. And you have been my partner on that in close, so I want to throw out that it would be myself and Ms. Lang as the two-in-two. But I'm happy to hear comments. And I didn't ask you if you wanted to do that either.
I actually was going to suggest the same thing. I've really loved working with you. And I'm very excited about being a supportive person for these initiatives, which have come through some of our brainstorming. So, yeah, I would love to serve on that committee.
So I think the one issue that we have to decide, is it a Brown Act committee or is it an ad hoc committee? And I think we've gone down the ad hoc committee route. And the concept behind that is that decisions aren't going to be made by the committee members. They're going to be gathering information and identifying, you know, proposals and information to bring back for a majority vote of the city council. And I support that, that format.
I agree with that. So, and then, just for clarification, so when you say that it's the ad hoc route, if that's the case, then it's time-bound with a purpose? That's my understanding.
You nailed it.
Okay, so if it's
That's exactly how ad hocks work.
So if it's time-bound with a purpose, meaning it's not Brown Act, it's not Brown Act required, then we have to figure out what the timing and the purpose is.
Is it too long to have it coincide with the term of the contract?
No, I think that that would be appropriate.
That would probably be logical. It goes until the end of the fiscal year.
Read my mind.
Oh, that sounds good. Does that satisfy?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'd like to see us put that in our rotation of
Sounds good.
assignments. And I might ask to be the next one for
That sounds very appropriate.
2026.
Absolutely.
I think if we, that was the intent, we would need to look at next time, whether that's a standing committee. If it's for the same continued purpose.
Then strike what I just said.
Okay.
I don't want, I don't want any of that to happen.
That's a tomorrow problem.
Presumably, we'll all, I mean, you know, God willing, we'll all be here in June 2026, right? So we can all talk about those things and then bring the next person forward.
Thank you so much for your comments and your support.
Oh, yes, thank you. We're very happy.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Do we need the motion for our two-in-two here?
Yes, please. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call. Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Wonderful. And then now we'll move on to our last item, which is resolution in support of the roadless rule, NHR 3930, from Representative Carver Hall.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
This is a two-part resolution. The first part is asking that the council oppose the rescinding of the roadless rule, which the Department of Agriculture recommended back in June of this year. Rescinding the roadless rule opens up federal forests and lands to not only road building, but also activities related to mining and logging and other industrial-type activities. So that's part one. There's a public comment period that is open until the 19th of this month. And so the timing of this is, that is the reason for the timing of this item on this agenda. But in concert with that, our own congressman, Carver Hall, along with a number of other congresspeople and senators, has authored HR 3930, which seeks to codify the roadless rule going forward so this doesn't occur again. Why is this relevant to Ojai? Ojai, you know, is surrounded by the Los Padres National Forest. Ojai is an area of nature and of recreation. Impacts to federal lands, natural lands, have an impact on our community, not only from a recreational perspective, but also from a species diversity perspective, a conservation perspective, a quality of life perspective. In fact, you have a council goal that does coincide with this, probably a couple. Arguably, this does also align with a fire hardening prevention goal. There is data out there that suggests that a lot of fires are actually caused in close proximity to roads. Creating more roads actually potentially increases that. So there is some data out there that supports that. I'm happy to answer any questions on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if there are any questions, I'll go to public comments. Do we have any?
Still no raised hands on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay.
I know, I was
He's being, he's garnishing, he's getting his strength together for some big fight coming up or something. No, I don't know. Or some mission. How's that? Well, I appreciate what you're saying. I do see the relevance. We did get a couple of comments on, you know, through our regular correspondence, and I'm all for it personally.
Me too. I'll make a motion.
Please.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with the letters supporting both, supporting HR 3930 and opposing the rescission of the roadless.
Second that.
So just to be clear, Mr. City Clerk, so that means two separate actions. One is making sure the city submits a letter before the September 19th public comment period closes. And there is instruction within the resolution on how to do that for any of the listening public that is paying attention as well. And then secondly, is a letter of support. We would send it to Carver Hall's office, but ask that he, as our congressperson, disseminate it to the rest of the authors of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will note, if I may, there are, there's a companion bill, S 2042, which does a similar thing.
And the current drafted resolution acknowledges that bill too.
Thank you. Mr. Whitman.
So, yeah, I have some comments, and I did them in the form of wherethes that if you guys are interested, I'd like to add to our resolution. And it's about a page, so bear with me. So whereas the roadless area conservation rule, the roadless rule, and the protection of roadless areas of the Los Padres National Forest promotes the health, safety, welfare, and quality life of the city of residents, city of Ojai residents, whereas the city of Ojai is located in a high-fire-risk zone, and the elimination of the roadless rule increases the risk of human-caused fire igniting in the national forest and thereafter being driven by wind into the city of Ojai. The existing roadless rule already allows for fire management projects, including fuel reduction, when they are consistent with restoring natural conditions. Whereas the city of Ojai is dependent upon Lake Gassitas and the Ojai groundwater basin as the nearly exclusive source of drinking water for the city of Ojai, an elimination of the roadless rule increases the risk of contamination of the watershed and the water supply. Whereas the city of Ojai is subject to periodic flooding and drought, and elimination of the roadless rule reduces the stability of intact ecosystems. The stability of water flow throughout the year increases turbidity during floods and reduces reliability of water availability during dry periods. Whereas the city of Ojai benefits economically from tourism, and tourists are attracted to Ojai in part due to activities, including, but not limited to biking, hunting, fishing, hiking, and backpacking in the Los Padres National Forest. Restricting development in the national forest protects the wild character that attracts visitors to the city of Ojai and supports both tourism and local jobs and the recreation industry. Whereas the city of Ojai is surrounded by wildlife that is a benefit to the community and its economy. The roadless rule protects wildlife corridors by keeping large tracts of land unfragmented. The roadless rule protects habitat for threatened and endangered species. This supports biodiversity and helps maintain intact ecosystems, which benefits the residents of the city of Ojai. Whereas the Ojai Valley is experiencing a gradual increase in temperatures and a gradual decrease in rainfall to an extent greater than the rest of the continental United States. The changes in the climate are a threat to the health and safety and well-being of Ojai residents. The Los Angeles National Forest is host to mature and old-growth ecosystems, which include mixed conifer forests, oak woodlands, and pinion juniper woodlands with large conifer stands found at the higher elevations such as Pine Mountain and the Ventana Wilderness. These mature ecosystems are carbon sinks which help to mitigate climate change. So I wrote none of that. You know, other than transitioning the wherethes, that's all stuff that I got off of the internet for why, you know, looking for the reasons that this is important, you know, not just as a general concept, but to this city.
They all resonate with me.
I love it. Yeah, I'm going to add that to my motion to
If we could politely ask for you to share.
Send the documents, you'd have to retype.
Yeah, actually, I'm right.
Even better, thank you.
Thank you for, that's wonderful. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
It's great.
And then, does the secondor agree?
Yes. Thank you very much. That was nice. So we're ready for the roll call.
Pardon me, Mayor, I missed that second.
Oh, mine. I was the second.
Wonderful.
And there's a typo in the very first paragraph.
Oh, my gosh.
I'll do some editing.
It says Los Angeles National Forest.
We heard you say that.
It should say Los Padres National Forest.
We knew what you meant. Yeah. Thank you. It was lovely.
Okay. I'm ready for a roll call.
Thank you.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
And Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, guys. That was great. And that's our last item. So we adjourned for today at 7:07.